I'd like to open the meeting of the Planning Commission, February 4th, and wish you all a happy Lunar New Year. First, we'd like you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call?
Commissioner Ruth?
Present.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Here.
Commissioner Dugan?
Here.
Vice Chair Shannon Bergman is absent this evening. And Chair Bradley.
Present. Thank you. First on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the Planning Commission agenda for tonight. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for their attention or have a matter placed on a future Planning Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of minutes of the January 22nd meeting. Any questions or corrections?
I motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. You've got it. All those in favor?
Oh, just sorry through the chair, we're going to do the roll call out.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ruth?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Thank you. With the minutes approved, we'll move on to our public hearing. The procedures for public hearings in the Planning Commission is that the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant may then make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal, supporting or opposing. When all the interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held then. The Planning Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else has raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice, or in written correspondence, delivered to the city prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door back in the corner and be heard and handed into one of us prior to addressing the Planning Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone in the front and speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist our planning staff in preparation of the minutes. The only item on the agenda tonight is consideration of adopting a resolution recommending an ordinance amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapters 1805, 1806, 1807, 1809, 1823, 1840, and 1841, requiring a conditional use permit for establishing, selling firearms or ammunition, and for shooting ranges, and restricting the location of such uses as a distance requirement within the city of San Carlos. Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening, thank you for that introduction. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner, will be giving the staff presentation today. There we go. I know you're familiar, but just to start from a little bit of background, the city did receive a request from Turner Outdoorsman to open a firearm retail establishment in San Carlos. Due to concerns from community members in November of 2017, the City Council adopted a moratorium on retail establishments selling ammunition or firearms while the city studies options for regulations. That moratorium is in effect through November 12th of this year. The staff conducted two community engagement meetings to discuss this topic further with the community. And the Planning Commission conducted two study sessions, and the City Council recently conducted one study session to discuss potential new regulations. At the City Council meeting, the Council requested staff prepare regulations for adoption that would regulate these businesses to the maximum extent reasonably permitted under the law. A few items that Council requested is a conditional use permit process for any new establishment, separation requirement from sensitive uses, a law enforcement permit that would be issued by the Sheriff's Office with at least an annual review. And they also requested some staff come back with some additional information, and that's relating to the ability for the city to limit the type of gun sales, as well as maybe adding on that law enforcement permit or require for suicide prevention information be presented at the point of sale. Just to give you an overview of current zoning regulations, the city regulates new businesses through its municipal code. And there's two different categories we have in place. Permitted, that's where locations are allowed with simply a business registration being issued at a staff level. And conditional, which requires approval at a public hearing. With conditional permits, the city can't impose reasonable conditions on the business operations. Firearms retail stores are considered permitted uses in the code, and they're allowed anywhere a retail store is permitted. As I indicated earlier, we currently have a moratorium in place on any new firearm store. Based on input from the Planning Commission, the City Council, and members of the public, staff has prepared an ordinance that requires a conditional use permit be issued by the Planning Commission for any new establishment that sells ammunition or firearms. The ordinance also establishes a 1,000-foot separation requirement from sensitive land uses, and that includes residential, schools, parks, as well as commercial recreation uses. The code currently requires a use permit for shooting ranges, but we've also added that same separational requirement that I just described for firearm retail establishments also be applied to any new shooting range. The Council will consider the draft ordinance included in your packet that establishes the law enforcement permit. And we've drafted the conditional use permit process to require the applicant obtain approval by the Sheriff's Office of the law enforcement permit prior to being considered by the Planning Commission. The final details of that permit application would be verified by the Sheriff prior to business opening, as well as verified at least annually by the Sheriff's Office. So that is the item before the Planning Commission, is essentially the zoning ordinance amendment, but what you also have in your packet is that discretionary law enforcement permit. And then just to give you an idea then of what that 1,000-foot buffer looks like when applied, we ran the 1,000-foot from residential uses, schools, parks, as well as commercial recreation uses. So that could include rock and jump in, 24-hour fitness, those types of uses, badminton, ping pong planet, would all be included in commercial recreation designation. So when you apply that 1,000-foot buffer, this is the location where potentially a new retail establishment could locate in San Carlos.
And also where we want all our shooting ranges located?
It would be the same location for shooting ranges, correct? If any applied, yes. And then that law enforcement permit that I mentioned briefly, that would be issued by the Sheriff's Office, and also required to apply and have approval by the Sheriff's Office prior to being considered by the Planning Commission. And that permit would require the Sheriff's Office to conduct background checks, review the operational aspects of a business. We could place limitations on persons entering the business. It would establish the grounds for denying the law enforcement permit, as well as include the applicant to submit information about the applicant as well as their employees that would be verified by the Sheriff's Office. So this is where those different operational requirements would be placed that we talked about previously. So the enhanced security system, possibly bollards out front, all of those items would be detailed in the discretionary law enforcement permit. And so the action before the Planning Commission tonight is to recommend the City Council approve the ordinance amending the municipal code relating to the zoning changes. And that would establish conditional use permit for establishments selling firearms and ammunition, as well as shooting ranges restricted in the location. If recommended by the Planning Commission, the next step would be consideration by the City Council, and that's been scheduled for first reading on March 11th. As you know, an ordinance does require two readings, so the second reading and adoption is scheduled for March 25th. The ordinance would then go into effect on April 25th. And the current moratorium, as I indicated, expires on May 12th. So this is an important timetable to keep. We are unable to extend that moratorium any further. Here this evening, we also have our outside legal counsel, Peter Price, as well as our police chief, Mark Dury, and I'd be happy to try and answer any of your questions.
Lisa, could we quickly go back to the overlay? Yes. So that reflects the 1,000-foot buffer. Does this also reflect the 1,000-foot limit from existing establishments?
Correct, yes.
So it does?
Yes.
Because we do have an establishment on industrial road, so I guess the green we're seeing there on industrial road is more than 1,000 feet from the other?
Correct, it's well north of that location.
Okay.
I have a question. If a applicant were to come applying to open a gun store at one of these parcels that are in green, would there be any other criteria that the Planning Commission would be able to apply to say no to that permit? Right now, I see that there's a requirement, a separation requirement, but is there any compatibility, may we use more general language, which could serve as the basis for a finding?
At the point, we have your standard land use for use permit, the standard findings would apply. You do have the opportunity to add additional findings to the code if you wish, but at the moment, we've just referenced those standard findings.
The standard findings have to do with compatibility with the, I'm just getting, master plan?
Right, compatibility with the general plan and any specific plans. And Lisa, do you have those handy by any chance? I don't think they're included in the packet here.
I mean, I guess that there's enough there that it would give the Planning Commission some maneuvering room to assess the application beyond just the 1,000-foot limit, which is not really debatable. That's a measurement.
Right, that would be a criteria that, you know, if they met that, right, you couldn't impose further separational requirements, but you would be able to evaluate it based on compatibility with, you know, that land use as well as the general plan.
But generally speaking, we would pretty much, you know, the staff recommendation would likely be to approve it, the conditional use, if it did fall within one of these areas, correct?
If it met the objective criteria, and as well, they met all of the requirements of the police chief with the discretionary law enforcement permit, it would be likely staff would recommend approval.
And through the chair, if the Commission would like, I did pull up the required findings for use permits, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six that would apply. And so I'm pulling it right from the code. If you'd like me to refresh your memory on those, I'd certainly be happy to do that if you like.
Please.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So the first finding is that the proposed use is allowed within the applicable zoning district and complies with all other applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance and other titles of the municipal code, that the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plans. Right now, we don't have any specific plans, so it would just be the general plan. The third is that the proposed use will not be adverse to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the community, nor detrimental to surrounding properties or improvements. And then the next is that the proposed use complies with any design or development standards applicable to the zoning district or the use in question unless waived or modified pursuant to the provisions of the title. There's obviously some modifications that are allowed through waivers or variances. And then the last two are the design, the design, location, size, and operating characteristics of the proposed activity are compatible with the existing and reasonably foreseeable future land uses within the vicinity. And then the last is a site is physically suitable for the type, density, and intensity of use being proposed, including access utilities and the absence of physical constraints.
Thank you for that, staff. Any more questions?
With this restriction on shooting ranges, I mean, could, for example, an outdoor shooting range be proposed in one of these locations? Or are we specifically talking about indoor shooting ranges?
The code doesn't distinguish between outdoor or indoor shooting ranges. It may be difficult to have an outdoor shooting range at this location, given the proximity to the airport, but possibly the location along industrial road may be more suitable. But I believe most indoor, most shooting ranges these days are indoor shooting ranges.
Did this City Council, did they consider shooting ranges? Or this, we were, like, this came later in our process, and we were like, boy, we better think of shooting ranges as well as we're doing this?
We did receive a recent inquiry from a member of the public, asking where a shooting range could be located. So that kind of jogged our memory as to, well, let's take a look at that. And we saw it is in the definition of commercial recreation uses. So it would be permitted with a conditional use permit today at any of those locations. So staff felt it appropriate to apply the same separational requirements.
Okay. And, you know, it strikes me that none of these locations are good for a shooting range, and especially not an outdoor shooting range, specifically with regard to the airport. You know, I know we've spent a lot of time deliberating on whether a specific ban could be put in place on additional gun stores, but do we have similar obstacles with regard to considering restrictions on shooting ranges?
I'll defer to our legal counsel.
Thank you.
The law is less clear with respect to shooting ranges than it is with respect to firearms retail establishments. All we know is that individuals who possess weapons for self-defense have to have the opportunity to engage in target practice to stay proficient. So I can tell you that I don't think a city could ban shooting ranges. The city of Chicago tried that and lost in court. So we know that a ban is not allowable, but cities do have the discretion to regulate the location of shooting ranges. The rub is going to be, do you adopt a regulation that is in effect a ban, which you can't do, or do you adopt a regulation that allows for a shooting range to be realistically located in the city if someone decides to locate one there?
Do you know of a case where they've tried to ban outdoor ranges in an urban setting like this?
Well, the city of Chicago banned shooting ranges altogether, regardless of whether they were outdoor, indoor, or in an urban setting. And the Seventh Circuit said, you can't do that and be consistent with the Second Amendment. So we know that's sort of the outer margin. That's really all that's been sort of carved out in the area of shooting ranges. There's not really a lot of litigation on where you can and cannot locate a shooting range. But I can tell you that state law leaves open the city's ability to regulate their location, so long as that regulation is not tantamount to a ban.
Given concerns about the location of an outdoor shooting range, the annoyance that would be associated with it, staff would recommend modification to the code to require indoor shooting ranges only, and then thereby prohibiting outdoor ranges. So we could just add, right before shooting range, say indoor shooting ranges, if that's the desire of the Commission.
Yeah, I don't see any outdoor range at all working in these areas. In fact, I worry we're moving too fast on considering shooting ranges in general. I view a shooting range as inherently more dangerous than a gun store, because, you know, we're actually having the discharge of firearms. And in fact, we're having people coming from outside our community into our community with loaded weapons with the expressed intent of firing them. You know, that strikes me as something we wouldn't want to move quickly on, and in fact, perhaps take more time on it is a thought I have, like what occurs to me offhand. And having served eight years in the Army, I've spent a lot of time on shooting ranges. You know, an outdoor shooting range is inherently dangerous because someone can fire into the air, and we don't know where that bullet's going to end up. So you usually see those in very rural areas up against the side of a mountain or something similar. An indoor shooting range is frankly, in my view, only as safe as the roof. The roof would have to be masonry, or once again, someone can shoot up, and it can go right through a wooden roof, and we don't know where that bullet is going to land. So I just throw it out that, and I don't know to the extent through our codes, we can get into construction materials, et cetera, but, you know, I would want to move very slow if we're deliberating on what should be required of an indoor shooting range. And I would prefer to ban outdoor shooting ranges. I think they're completely incompatible with an urban use.
I'd agree with banning outdoor ranges in a community like this. Any other questions of the staff?
Following along on that concern, do the law enforcement permit requirements address the shooting range, the particular issues of a shooting range, like was just ranged about shooting through the ceiling, or other elements that are?
We are working on those criteria now. The law enforcement permit requirements that apply to retail establishments, not all of them will apply to shooting ranges just by virtue of their operational nature. Some of them will, and what we're doing now is identifying that subset that will. There's no reason why you couldn't write into the law enforcement permit criteria particular materials that you would want the roof of the indoor shooting range to be made of masonry or what have you. You could certainly insert those requirements into the law enforcement permit context, should the Council choose to do so, and should you recommend that to the Council?
Yeah, I wouldn't be worried about unnecessary elements of the rule, but we may be missing areas that should be regulated for shooting ranges. And so if somebody, and we're not going to think of all of the issues, it seems like there must be a set of, somebody has probably thought this through, that, just to build, it would seem to me that some sensible regulation of the number of people on the premises at any one time, the way firearms are checked in and checked out, again, to your point, just as?
Ultitude.
Yeah, someone's thought about this, and we should learn from it. Right, so sort of analogous to what was done for the retail sales, you know, that's a very comprehensive set of regulations that experts have compiled that we take advantage of, that knowledge base. Be wonderful to have a similar exhaustive set for a shooting range.
We can locate those.
Yeah, hopefully it exists and can be brought forward on the timeframe that the city would like to move forward on this. Do these, can these matters be de-linked? Can the shooting range question be subject to more learning here by the Commission and with some help from staff? Or is it necessary to do these concurrent?
You know, I think there's two issues that I hear. One is, I think perhaps the City Council's going to be considering the law enforcement permit and the criteria for shooting ranges, and I think these are all helpful, the items for discussion, just to make sure we've got the state-of-the-art regulation for safety. You know, that's obviously not what we want to have happen. I mean, keep in mind, they're currently allowed under our code with a use permit, so we're just tightening and adding some distance requirements. That's the second part of what we're trying to accomplish with this zoning ordinance amendment that's being proposed. So they are in essence decoupled, really, but just part of it is not your purview because it's not part of the zoning code. So what we wanted you to see that, that we had this element just as part of your, you know, your knowledge base for how to evaluate this. But there is another layer of regulation that's going to be required. And again, I think your comments about shooting ranges are helpful to make sure that we cover that.
And just to clarify, currently, under the use classification for large-scale commercial entertainment and recreation, it does indicate indoor shooting ranges. And so what I would recommend then is on page 42, which establishes Section 18.200, before shooting range, it say indoor at every single occasion. To be very clear, that's all that's being referenced here.
But does that leave it open, I mean, is that just mean we're adding requirements to indoor ranges and not adding any requirements to outdoor ranges?
Outdoor ranges are prohibited.
Oh, they are. And what mechanism is that?
It says indoor only. It says indoor.
It says indoor.
It doesn't say shooting range, it says indoor shooting range. So thereby.
Okay, so and if use is not listed in this list of use classifications, then it's just not allowed? Is that, okay.
Can we tighten up that language without changing the code and say, outdoor ranges are prohibited? Or do you think it's necessary?
We can look into that.
Maybe it's redundant.
Well, the way the code is charted out, I mean, it seems like we would have to add a category, you know, outdoor shooting ranges, and then have lines through each of the items, if that's kind of how we've got it set up, because that's how we've prohibited some uses in the past, like, that I've seen on the chart. Am I getting that right, Lisa?
Correct. I guess on the use classifications, it could say perenn outdoor prohibited. I don't know that we've?
I mean, I think that would be sufficient to make it clear.
It'd be on packet page 46.
Yeah, I think that's a good add, thank you.
Question on the 1,000 feet. Why 1,000? Why not 1,100? Why not, you know, 1,250?
Sure. So we did run a few scenarios, and we were trying to see at what point are we zoning this business out of town? And so 1,000 feet did leave some sites available for the businesses to locate. The concern is if you go farther than that, there's not going to be any spaces left.
And does it, does it matter then whether or not anybody else has limited the number of potential parcels for this kind of establishment? I mean, I guess just wanting to check, City Council said, yes, this is good, and with our attorney's advice, we are going to surmise challenge.
Well, we've evaluated that, and there's one other factual reason that we looked at, and that the adult entertainment ordinance that we at, and that the adult entertainment ordinance that we have also uses 1,000 feet as a distance requirement. And there's been recent case law that our special counsel knows a lot more about than either, Teshara case in Alameda County upheld a distance zoning requirement. So, we feel that this is an appropriate way to look at the distance requirements through our zoning code. And 1,000 feet is a number that we already have in our code, so that was kind of the basis for our thinking on it.
Good, thanks.
I have a question for Chief Dury, if I could.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Yeah, thank you. Definitely appreciated your input at the last planning commission meeting when we considered this. And we heard you speak on your desire to see these stores in a kind of well-lit, accessible areas of town. You know, we've sort of gone maybe somewhat in a different direction with this 1,000-foot buffer, but it does seem to make sense by way of containing where these businesses can be located. And so I guess, just kind of a general question to you, give you an opportunity to speak on if, you know, you're comfortable with the way this 1,000-foot buffer will result in the potential location of additional firearm stores, and how that relates to this law enforcement permit, which we're not reviewing specifically here this evening, but I think really does go part and parcel with this new zoning, and just how your department will react generally to this law enforcement permit.
As far as the zoning, I'm very comfortable with the zoning and the way it's set up right now on that map. We can adapt and police any way, anyhow. Just, the reason I brought it up last time about the well-lit area, it may be a busier section, is just for the commission to have that as a consideration. We can adapt any way to police anything and make sure, and safeguard it any way we can.
Okay, terrific. And then, I assume you've read through this proposed law enforcement permit. You know, how do you react to that? Is this something your department is eager to engage with and feel ready to support?
Yes, absolutely. There's... We can draft one that really fits the need of the city, and we can get it done. And I think it's a great idea.
Okay, terrific.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Chief.
All right, if there are no more questions, I don't have any slips, but does anyone wish to address the commission? Would you come up and state your name?
My name is David Pollak. I'm a resident of San Carlos. Just, maybe it's a stupid question, but what happens if, in that area, one day, an indoor mini golf company says, "I want to set up shop in San Carlos, and I want to go to Parcels 333, right in the middle of that zone"? Does that blow a hole in the middle of the zoning process? Because now you have a commercial recreational property in that location.
Well, my reading on this is that the 1,000-foot buffer is between other-like establishments, so I don't think that use would have an impact.
To clarify, it would, as drafted, because we've established 1,000-foot separation from commercial recreation uses. And so every time a business would like to come in, we're going to have to run a map. Because these businesses, commercial recreation businesses, kind of come and go in the community. So it could be that at some point, other areas of the town are opened up as opportunities for this business to locate, while other opportunities may, you know, close up. But I think throughout the community, there will still be some properties available for a new retail establishment.
Okay. And then, briefly, we have two existing establishments in town, so I believe they're non-conforming. And so that would limit their ability to move. But does that also limit their ability to maintain their site, add on to their site, or otherwise make improvements?
They would be considered a legally non-conforming use, and so they would be able to remain in place. The business could be sold to somebody else to operate it. So under zoning, they would be, you know, legal and allowed to remain there. It may be difficult to expand a legally non-conforming use. I need to look at that wording a little more carefully. But they would be required to be up to date with the law enforcement permit. And so that's something that the police department will be evaluating annually as well.
Okay. So if they need additional permits, like for additional security systems, et cetera, being legally non-conforming is not bar them from seeking the other permits they need to be in compliance?
Right. The law enforcement permit would apply to all active businesses in the community.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, supporting or opposing the motions? Seeing none, I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Discussion among the commission?
I wanted to work on the shooting range issue again. So I understand that a lot of the concerns about how such a place would be operated would fall under the law enforcement permit, and that's not what we're... Not our direct concern tonight, although I appreciate getting the update on that. But I wonder whether there's any land use elements that are specific to the shooting ranges that maybe we should have thought about getting in here, that didn't get in here yet. I mean, there's the separation, the separation, and then the more general compatibility rules. But it kind of seems like the shooting range scenario was a latecomer, and so I wanted to pressure test whether we've... Our portion of this, that we've got everything needed in there.
Thank you. I tend to agree that we should separate the shooting range from the sales store.
Maybe just to... Maybe staff could help. So let's say a shooting range were to come before us. Wouldn't we then think about the... Any approval conditions for approval? And couldn't those include materials of construction at that time, as one example? Just as a normal course of approving conditional use permit?
As a part of the application materials, we would certainly ask for, you know, the type of construction of the building. We probably want to see a noise analysis to make sure that, you know, that the sound wouldn't be traveling or would be compatible with the zone that it's located in. And yes, you could establish reasonable conditions that would be ensuring the health and safety of the community. So you could certainly add the type of construction as a reasonable condition.
So if a shooting range came before us, I would insist that it was masonry construction on all walls and ceiling. Is it enough just to wait and then apply that as a condition for the conditional use permit? Or should we just go ahead and declare that standard as part of our code now?
The only issue is, what I see is, we might want to make it not necessarily a construction material, but a...
Performance standard.
Performance standard, which I was going to that. So there's... I'm looking at page 42 of your packet. And so we have operational and performance standards under subsection D. We could add... There's one as minimum distances. We could add a two that says, "Any such facilities shall be constructed in such a way that..." Or, you can help me with my language here, but it's... The shorthand of it is...
Bulletproof.
Bulletproof, is right. But I don't know if I want to use that language, but we could recommend to the council, if you give us some flexibility on drafting that, we could recommend to the council when this moves up, that it have that kind of a performance standard.
Solid construction to ensure projectiles are unable to exit buildings or something. We'll work on some appropriate wording.
Yeah, I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. Thank you.
What's the feeling of the commission to...
I mean, I can't think of other...
Move ahead with it now, or delay it?
Well, I think my concerns of the shooting ranges have been addressed. I wanted to make sure no outdoor ranges were permissible, and that we had performance standards on the construction material. With that, I think indoor shooting ranges fine recreational activity.
My only addition to that would be, then, as council are thinking about this, whatever these other set of criteria are that have already been thought about in terms of operational standards or requirements, that that gets folded in. But from our purview, I think John, two good points on construction and outdoor, and I feel's all right.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't... I can't... Nothing else comes to my mind.
And, you know, I think, as a commission, we were of a mind to perhaps, you know, I think we did recommend capping the number of gun stores in town, but obviously, the city council has given us some guidance and leadership on this, and they're the ones that would have to defend any challenging lawsuit. So, otherwise, I'm comfortable with the construction here with 1,000-foot buffers. I think that certainly puts a measure of restraint and control, and we can all apply our good thinking when such a conditional use permit would come before us. And I also feel good that we have such a well-constructed law enforcement permit. And I think not having had that till now was a clear oversight. So I feel much better having that in place. So I think I'm okay approving this.
Yeah, me too.
I am also with the shooting ranges. However, with the retail establishments selling these weapons, I view very seriously my position on the planning commission for this town or any town. And our biggest concern is public health and safety in planning for our communities. So therefore, the retail establishment now operating in town does not, at least the owner told us several meetings ago, that they don't sell automatic weapons in their store voluntarily. I would like to see words in this motion and proposal that automatic weapons be prohibited from sale in their stores. Unlike you, John, I've been in the military, retired Air Force officer, and I've fired M16s and different military weapons. Automatic weapons are made for one person, for one purpose, and that's to kill human beings, and I can't support that.
Through the chair, the automatic weapons are already illegal in California, so a retail outlet couldn't sell an automatic weapon. If you're thinking about semi-automatic weapons, there's a lot of different types of semi-automatic weapons, some of which are banned under the Unsafe Handgun Act and other state laws. So I'll leave it to our special counsel to describe that, where the state of the state and preemption issue is really what I'm talking about.
The way we dealt with this, because putting a ban on automatic weapons directly in your ordinance would probably be preempted by state law. So if I can direct your attention to packet page 63, which is one of the criteria in the law enforcement permit ordinance, and it's proposed Section 5.13080 subdivision J, which says, "The applicant shall comply with all California laws regulating the sales of firearms and ammunition, including but not limited to..." And those penal code sections are... Some of those sections are part of the Unsafe Handgun Act. So you're citing to the California law that already regulates and bans the sale of automatic weapons. And so that's going to be folded into the permit. You're requiring the applicant to comply with state law as it exists, rather than adopting a separate provision yourselves, which would be preempted by state law. So you get to the desired result, but in a more legally defensible way. That's why it was written that way.
Thank you for the clarification, then.
Sure.
Are there any other comments, questions?
Maybe just to build, I... We've had good discussion. We have a couple study sessions and guidance from city council, with good work from staff, as written. I'm supportive of the retail ammunition and firearms portion of this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Well, the recommendation that we're being estimate... Make includes shooting ranges. So I guess, I think with the additional items that we've already mentioned about the performance standards, I'm good with this recommendation, including the shooting range part.
Then it sounds like we're ready to go here?
entertain a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the resolution recommending the city council approve an ordinance amending San Carlos municipal code chapters 1805, 1806, 1807, 1809, 1823, 1841, and 1841, requiring a conditional... Do we need a correction there? I see two 1841s.
I think it's 1840 and 1841, because I'm looking at the...
Okay. So amend that to 1840 and 1841, requiring a conditional use permit for establishments selling firearms or ammunition, and for shooting ranges, and restricting the location of uses with a distant requirement within the city of San Carlos, and subject to the building standards that we discussed.
And the prohibition of outdoor shooting ranges.
And clarifying that our code is allowing indoor ranges only.
Second.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Thank you. Thank everyone. So, next on the agenda is reports and correspondence and general information?
Yes, through the chair. There are no reports on recent city council action items this evening.
I want to announce we had... Excuse me, I still have a cold. There was a San Mateo County Planning Commissioners Training Academy meeting at San Mateo City Library last Thursday evening, and John Dugan was there, and David Roof was there, and I was there. And I learned some things.
And I would just like to attest that Chairman Bradley did, in fact, review 100 history, 100-year history of zoning in 15 minutes, which was a professional accomplishment, I felt.
The thing that amazed... Thank you, sir. The thing that amazed me most was, people came up to me afterward and said they were interested in it. I can't imagine people being interested in the history of city planning. I know, when I was in school, I didn't like taking history of architecture or history of city planning, because planning was about the future, not the past, right? And then, when I was a junior faculty member, they said, "You're the new guy. You have to teach history of city planning. Nobody else likes it." So that was 49 years ago, I think, and I've been doing it ever since, more or less. Thank you. Thank you for being there. I think, I hope we do more... less. Thank you. Thank you for being there. I think, I hope we do more of these. Maybe we can have one here in, in San Carlos later, too, rotate around. I know Sonoma State, our county, offers one each year, and others have tried, but this was a joint effort with San Mateo County Planning Department, and they call Element 21. I guess, not because there's 21 elements in general plan, but there's 21, aren't there 20 or 21 municipalities in the county? So, they're counting the county.
Well, perhaps you could petition staff for a speaking slot at the upcoming Citizens Academy Planning Day.
Yes. Any correspondence, or?
Yes, I do have some correspondence that I'm going to hand out. As I may have mentioned at a previous planning commission meeting, the city is working on a bicycle pedestrian master plan, and I just noticed that they have two workshops planned. So, I just wanted to make sure the commission knew that. And then, of course, your friends or family or neighbors may be interested, so I just wanted to hand that out. And again, there is one workshop planned for Thursday, February 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the San Carlos Library at 610 Elm Street. And then, the second workshop is planned for Tuesday, March 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. But this location will be at the L'Oreal Community Center at 503 Old County Road. So, I'll just pass you some information from the project webpage. And then, I guess I'm last on the agenda as well, for planning staff comments, reports, or updates of current projects. We don't have any projects that are scheduled to be presented on February 19th, which is actually on a Tuesday this month. So, we're most likely going to be canceling that planning commission meeting, and then we'll see you back in early March. And are we still planned for the scoping meeting? The EIR scoping meeting for the Black Mountain Townhouse project is on the agenda for the first meeting in March, just a reminder. Okay, that's all I have.
Also, in, ahead, in April 13th through the 16th, is the National APA, the American Planning Association, meeting, national planning conference at Moscone Center in San Francisco. They love to have planning commissioners come, as well as staff planners, agency, public agency planners, and private consulting firm planners. Several thousand planners will be there. So, it's dangerous to be in San Francisco with that many planners loose. Thank you, that's all I have. If no one else has to add, meeting adjourned.